Order at 6:03 PM. Today is June 21st. All alder, all alderpersons are present in the chambers. Item three is Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in Lieu of Invocation. Complete stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the Pledge of the United States of America. The two republics for which we stand, one nation, one God. Any difference?
All right, re, item four is Reading of the Minutes of the previous meetings, meeting held on May 17, 2022. See Attachment one. What are your wishes? There we, no, we got it. Hit switch. We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Item five is considered for confirmation of Mayor Blais' appointment to the Library Board. See Attachment two.
I'll move to approve.
Your button. Oh, there you go. I don't like how it flips off. So a motion is second to approve the confirmation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Item six is considered for adoption and ordinance revising certain parking regulations in section 2713 of the municipal code, which were recommended to be approved by the Public Works Committee meeting at its May 22nd meeting. See Attachment three. I got bumped out. Tyler, I was kicked out of the voting software. I'm going to try reconnecting here. I need to wait on my account. What are your wishes regarding that ordinance? We have a motion by Sherri. Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Keeps kicking me out. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. On item seven, consider adoption of the action of the Plan Commission meeting held on June 6th. Let me bring this up. Bear with me, it's kind of long. The Plan Commission meet, met on June 6th, or June 6th at 4:00 PM. A list of attendees are on file in the Clerk's office. Item one was to approve the report from, reports from a second and a 10th Plan Commission meeting. There was a motion and a second to approve. Item two was an update from Van, regarding Vandalwall and Associates, Wisconsin Rapids Recovery and Redevelopment Plan Update. Item three, Michael Florrie, 22-000418, had a certified survey map to combine two lots at 1810, 1820 Apricot Street and dedicate right away on Apricot Street. There was a motion and a second to approve that, which carried four zero. Item four is Todd Lloyd, 22-00490, was a certified survey map to create two lots at 2934 State Highway 73 and dedicate right away on State Highway 73. That motion was approved. There was a motion and a second to approve that, which carried four zero. Item five is Excel Engineering, 22-00503, was another request for a certified survey map to create two lots at 1100 East River View Expressway and dedicate it right away on East River View Expressway. There was a motion and a second to approve that item, which carried four zero. Item six is Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, was a request for a site plan review to construct an accessory building at 2651 A Street South. Information was provided by staff. There was a motion and a second to approve the construction of the accessory building with some conditions that are on file in the Plan Commission, or the Economic Development Department. That motion carried four zero. Item seven is Teresa Cashman, out of the box Coffee House, 22-000495, requests for a site plan review to construct an accessory structure at 3820 A Street South. Background was provided. There was a motion and a second to approve that construction of the site, of the accessory structure with conditions that are on file in the Community Development Department. That motion carried 31. Item eight is PH Wisconsin Rapids LLC, 22-00515, was a request for a sign exception to replace the cabinet of a non-conforming freestanding sign for a Qdoba restaurant at 1821 A Street South. After discussion, there was a motion and a second to approve. That motion carried four zero. Item nine is Donald Garrison, 22-000298, public hearing and action on a request for conditional use permit to operate a tourist rooming house at 465 Shady Lane. The public hearing was open. List of people speaking against the project are on file in the Community Development Department and that, and also the applicant for, the applicant's mother spoke in favor of the request. The public hearing was closed after discussion. There was a motion and a second to approve the request of the conditional use permit. That motion failed technically two to two, which we'll need to pull out and take up as a separate action item. Item 10 is David Zilke, 22-00440, public hearing and action on a request for a conditional use permit to operate a vehicle repair shop at 2200, 2240 A Street South. There was a public hearing, which was opened at 5:01. No one spoke against it. The applicant spoke in favor. The public hearing was closed at 5:04. Some questions were asked. There was a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for that vehicle repair shop with conditions on file in the Planning and Economic Development Department. That motion carried four zero. Item 11, Wood County, or County of Wood, 22-00423, public hearing and action on a request for a planned development district for the county campus and construction of a public safety facility at 400 Market Street. An overview was provided in a presentation. There was a public hearing that opened at 5:13 PM. Nobody spoke in favor or against that request. The public hearing was closed at 5:14. That, there was a motion and a second to approve the request for a planned development district for the county, county campus and the construction of a public safety facility at the 400 Market Street, which includes precise implementation of plan and deviations subject to conditions which are on file in the Community Development Department. That motion carried four zero. Item 12 is City, Wisconsin Rapids, 22-00398, public hearing and action on a request to amend Chapter 11 zoning ordinance specifically regarding garage requirements for two-family dwellings, twin homes, townhouses, and multifamily units. Public hearing was opened at 5:51. Nobody spoke in favor or, or against the request. That public hearing closed at 5:52. There was a motion and a second to approve the request to amend Chapter 11. And that motion carried four zero. Item 13 was adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn, and the meeting adjourned at 5:57 PM. Yes, the only request I have is we'll probably have to hold out. Item 10? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, item nine. Perfect. Can you hit the motion button? And Patrick, did you?
Can we hold out 12?
And item 12? Yes. So I have a motion and a second to approve the balance of the report. Oh, Tom? The old Chapco building? The old Chapco building? Yep, yep.
Yeah. Have there been, since this was talked about maybe last, I've known, I'm not even sure, last fall? I'm not sure when this was talked about last time here. Have there been significant changes to the design such as height? You know, just has there, has there been, has there been, what changes have been made since we talked last? Since the group was here with us, you know, last fall or whenever that was?
Tom, did you want to just hold it out, or?
Okay, yeah.
If it'd be easier?
Okay, that might be easier.
Okay. Anything else wish to be held out? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote on the balance of the report. Minus nine, 11, and 12. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's regarding item number nine. This would be the request for the tourist rooming house. Go ahead, Jim.
So I'm not sure, but I'm assuming there's a number of people here this evening that have an interest in this, and I would be happy to recognize anybody that'd like to come and speak on or against it.
Is the mic on, Paul? Well, Green Lane and Barham, could we?
Oh, there we go. Paul Kobishak, 459 Shady Lane. I really do not feel that we need that type of a business in a residential area. Quiet neighborhood. And my, one of my biggest things is you're taking money away from the hotels and motels here in the city. They're, I'm sure they're hurting right now. And I, you put one of those out of business because if you have a lot of these rooming houses, whatever you want to call them, then where are you? That's a lot of tax base that's gone and probably never will return. I just don't feel that it's the right thing to do in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Is there somebody else?
Pete Augustinac, 464 Glenwood Heights. I feel it's not proper to put a rooming house in a one and two-family residential area. Of course, we do have rentals, et cetera, but they are long-term, and this is a short-term deal, and I would, I would question who and how often this will be changing as far as the occupants are concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Council have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Matt.
I'm not sure who to ask this to, but is there any kind, when it comes to short-term use like this, I know there's no special permit or anything for rental houses or anything like that. Is there anything for short-term that's saying you can or can't do something like this with your property, or right now is it just, is he able to do it?
So Kerry's here to represent the Community Development Department.
Yep. So we don't regulate rentals. There can be four, up to four unrelated people in a unit. If someone wants to advertise for transient guests which are staying in less than 30-day stretches, they need to apply for a tourist rooming house, and that enables them to advertise on Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera. One of the things that has made it difficult for municipalities to kind of have strict prohibition or even kind, somewhat limiting in terms of guidelines, is the state has really ruled in favor of the owners in this case to be able to have tourist rooming houses in cities. So by having a conditional use permit process, we are able to add conditions which can address specific concerns of the neighbors or of city officials. So we are able to have conditions. We are unable to prohibit. So the conditional use permit process enables us to add conditions and also to collect room tax dollars on the tourist rooming houses.
So there's a house, I'm just thinking of how this works. There's a house right on, I think it's Second Avenue, and it's a nice small house, but they seem to have like stuffed about seven or eight people in there. But they're there longer term. Is that more of a rent, like a different situation?
Well, not, not necessarily. I mean, if there's a lot of people, I believe our zoning ordinance allows two people, I'd have to double-check it, but two people per bedroom max, no more than eight for a tourist rooming house. If it's four or less, someone's able to rent. For example, if they just want to own a home and rent it to a, you know, longer-term renter. But if there's a lot of people there, then it could be something that would be a zoning violation that the Community Development Department could follow up on with a zoning letter if there are quite a few people.
So what I'm understanding you're saying is there, according to the state and the municipality, we don't necessarily have recourse to not allow them to do this as a tourist rooming house?
If they're, so if they apply for conditional use permit, they follow the supplemental standards and any standards, or, I mean, conditions that we would want to add. The, the way we could deny a conditional use permit is if there's something specific about this application that makes it, at the council's discretion, something that they see that they don't want to approve, but, but it would have to be specific to this application. It couldn't be that, for example, it's, we're denying it because it's just not something we want in the city. The state doesn't allow us to prohibit them outright.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
I'd like to know what the ordinances are exactly for Wisconsin Rapids and why that wasn't a part of our packet. At least I don't see it here in our packet.
Okay, I'm going to pull up. So tourist rooming house, as described in the zoning code, is a place where a single-family dwelling, individual rooms in a single-family dwelling, and/or one or more cabins or cottages are offered to transient guests for rent, provided the total, total number of guestrooms does not exceed eight, guest rooms does not exceed eight. The term does not include other forms of transient lodging, including bed and breakfast and overnight lodging. They're required to provide one parking space for each guestroom. They have to comply with state permitting process, processes. They have to display the permit. They need to fill out the appropriate room tax paperwork. They need to maintain a guest registry that includes who's, who's staying there, the names and information about the guests. They need a named agent within a five-mile radius, and then the building inspector inspects the property prior to make sure that it meets all applicable building code requirements.
Okay, you said that we can't deny it outright unless there's something specific. What would that specific thing be as to not allow this, but allow a different one?
So that's a very good question. I would say proximity to sensitive uses such as school, daycare, parks, possibly. If there are specific concerns related to, for, I'm just going to give examples. If there was like a fire pit in the backyard or hot tub or something like that, there could be screening requirements. Any, any people that stay, of course, are subject to all municipal ordinances, including noise ordinances and the like, parking, et cetera. But in terms of specific, it could also be something specific to the property that won't accommodate the supplemental standards. For example, if there wasn't adequate parking on-site, or, or for some reason the orientation of the property was unable to meet some of the requirements. But, but there would have to be specific things cited that relate to the lot or the configuration of the property. Or I think proximity to other uses.
Are there any other ordinances other than what you read that pertain to this?
No, that's our tourist rooming house section that relates to this, the use specified in this conditional use permit application. One other thing to note, transient guests are defined by a person who travels to a location away from his or her permanent address for a period of less than 30 consecutive calendar days for vacation, pleasure, recreation, culture, business, or employment.
So it's 30 days left, so they're only staying there 30 days?
The, the way our zoning code reads, it's for transient guests that are staying for 30 days or less, but there's no, in, in my understanding, there's no real way to, if a transient guest was staying for thirty, you know, 30 days a day off, 30 days a day off. I mean, for most of the timeline types of requirements, there's not really good ways to kind of enforce that. But yes, technically, it's a period of less than 30 consecutive calendar days.
Has the city not allowed other Airbnbs or Vrbo's in the past, and what were those conditions?
So, so to my knowledge, there haven't been any denied. There are some that exist that we're researching now that possibly have not gone through this process, and we may be asking them to do that if we find that. But I don't know of any conditional use permit applications that have been denied. In the last few years, though, there have been pretty substantial changes to the conditional use permit process, and then additionally, state guidance has come down regarding tourist rooming houses pretty recently.
And what was that guidance, if you want to elaborate on that?
That, that municipalities are very limited in their ability to prohibit, and then they can establish supplemental standards and attach conditions, but to deny a conditional use permit, there has to be specific attributes associated with that application that are creating the reason for denial.
Okay, so if this was allowed, and then there were problems there, and the city saw that there were problems, what are the steps and where would I find that in the municipal code?
So to my, and the police department would probably speak better to this, but in terms of generally speaking, but more specific to this application, there could be condition attached to the effect of, you know, if one complaint is reported, kind of like they're put on notice, and if two or more complaints are reported, the tourist rooming house could, although can it, I'm not sure if it can be revoked, Sue, if it's not a permit. There, there could still be suspension of the conditional use permit, I would think.
Right, it would just be like any other conditional use permit in the city, that they have to abide by the conditions, and if not, I'm trying to find the specific section in the code. It's, it'd also be subject to our chronic nuisance ordinance, that if there are, you know, a number of calls, it could be deemed a chronic nuisance, which could be the basis for the revocation of a permit, or at least a plan to come into compliance.
So we could establish a number of complaints that would require temporary ceasing of the conditional use permit for a period of a year or six months or something like that.
I have a question about that ordinance. Would it be possible for you to email that to all the aldermen?
Yeah, yep.
And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Same kind of lines that Patrick is doing. I know, you know, what kind of revocation, I know, Sue, you said that it could be, you know, taken away or whatever, but I just know even as renters, how hard it is for tenants to get renters out. It could take months and months and months. So how long could something like that take? If there were so many issues, complaints with the police department or per se with the ordinance officer, how difficult would it be? Do you know what I'm saying?
Right, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not like we have to evict someone because those people are there without leases and are just, you know, transient. So it's not like the landlord or the owner of the property can say, well, I, you know, I need to, have to wait to get these people out or something like that. So I, I don't know, remember the last time we took enforcement action on a conditional use permit, so I guess it's hard to say. I, I mean, I would think we would give them some time to come, you know, depending on what the complaints are, what the violations might be, if there's a time to, you know, remedial action that's necessary, or a timeframe within which we would revoke the permit. I mean, it could, depending what it is, it could be five days, it could be 30 days. You know, I, I guess, really depends on the nature of the violation and if we allow time to remedy what it might be, or if we just proceed with revocation.
And Patrick, the conditional use application, it was in the June 6th packet that I'm looking at. And so, according to what we're talking about is if there was something in this actual conditional use application, if there was something listed or something that we wanted to add to this, they would just fill out a new application, or we would just attach our conditions to this actual application that was already submitted, correct?
Correct. I think, I think council has the option to add conditions that would be attached to the conditional use permit, and then that would be part of the resolution.
So that's kind of my question. We've got a list of seven conditions here. If we wanted to add, would we have to do that before we'd be vote, we voted? Would this go back to the planning commission? I guess, what are your suggestions?
I guess I could see it either way, if it, if it's, I guess it depends what the conditions are that you want. It, it's certainly permissible for you to add conditions today and vote on them. Obviously, you would need to know what they are before the vote. If you're more comfortable with the, you know, you have certain areas that you're concerned about, and you want to direct the planning commission to look at those further and, and come back with a recommendation, then you could do it that way. Not sure when this was, when the application was applied for, in terms of any timeframes. That was the first.
Yeah, let's see, I have. April 26, 2022 is the date of the application.
I, I don't think it would be unreasonable to, if you wanted to refer it back to planning, planning commission, because you had certain, or specific concerns over certain conditions to be reviewed by them, or to suggest to them, or else, as I said, you could add conditions right now and, and vote on it.
Patrick?
I don't know if you know this or not. So Donald Garrison, has he obtained a license from the Department of Agriculture?
From Department of Health Services?
Says that they shall obtain from Department of Agricultural, Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection License as a tourist rooming house.
I, yeah, from DAT cap. I'm, one, I know they need to apply through DHS and through the Wood County Health Department. I'm, I can't remember if they need to apply through DAT cap or not, but I do believe he has pursued both his state licensing and his county licensing, and he may be called in right now. Not sure if he, I believe he was gonna attend remotely. Oh yes, that, that is still a requirement that he applies through DAT cap, and so I believe he was pursuing both. But that would be required before, technically, you know, he could operate.
And you don't know if he's been approved or denied?
I don't, I don't. Nope, I think usually that those applications are happening concurrently with the conditional use permit application. So I don't, but I don't have verification that he's gotten it yet.
That's all.
Uh, thank you, sure.
Thank you. I know you indicated that it was in, looking at the maps, and that it was close to a school?
Um, no, I, I am not, I don't have that verified, but I was just thinking of instances where maybe a specific property could be called out separately in terms of like a general kind of recommendation. So I was thinking a possibility would be if there was close proximity to sensitive uses, or things that would be site-specific versus just like a general, just not wanting to approve the use itself.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Okay. So to me, it seems like the state has already ruled that you cannot, without good reason, deny this. And I don't see that a good reason has been given that you can't deny it. So then it would become, if we are going to limit them and put them under supervision, or if we are going to not limit them and just let all Airbnbs and Verbos be handled by the free market. I think that's a lot bigger question than just being presented with this, many of you tonight. I think what we should do is if we could table all applications until we have that discussion, and then at that time decide on what we're gonna do.
Matt?
Did I understand that there is already a list of seven or eight conditions that we have to, in, in order to pass this? Is that what I understood, or was that?
There are seven suggested conditions to be attached to this conditional use permit.
Okay. And are we asking if we want to put more on top of that? Is that? Because we can't not, as far as I'm understanding, we can't not pass it unless somebody has the, in the audience, or in the public has something that we should know that is site-specific, right? That says?
Right. I think, I think there are two separate conversations. So I think one is more related to possibly adding conditions, looking at this specific application, adding conditions that would ensure that some of the neighbors' concerns are addressed and some of the foreseen consequences are, are addressed. I think there's a separate item that's come up to explore maybe a moratorium, or looking at some kind of discontinuation of, of granting these conditional use permits and reverting the conversation back to the planning commission to look again at our tourist rooming house guidelines and see if that's in fact how we want to implement and enforce tourist rooming houses in the city. Is that correct? And, and I don't know technically how that would work if we're in the midst of an application right now in terms of moratorium and what's allowable from the city's standpoint.
Thank you.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, we talked that probably next month and the month after, we'll see more app, another application each month?
Yep, yep, likely, and we have one in that is under review now, and likely there, there could be more coming. So if there is concern at the common council level about the bigger picture and how as a city we are governing these and how we're looking at them, it may be a wise idea to get ahead of it and, you know, have, start to get a clearer picture of how we'd like to proceed.
Thank you. Jay?
Thank you. So, I guess the way this sits right now, I'm not prepared to support this. I, I guess I would like to make a motion to send this back. I think we need to add on this list of seven that these, these properties are subject to a six-month review process. I think we need to determine how many violations, if they have violations, and what are the penalties gonna be if there are violations? I, I don't think we're, we're ready to approve this tonight. I don't think, I just don't think we're there. So I'll make a motion to send this back to planning. I'll make a motion to send this back to planning.
Can we hit your button?
Oh yeah, the button.
Oh, sorry, she caught ya. We have a motion and a second. Carrie?
Thank you. Approximately how many rental, or short-term rentals do we have in the city now? Do you, I mean, I know, I know that, at least two.
Yep, I think it's around five or six. And I think there's one that has obtained conditional use permit for bed and breakfast, which, which, I mean, if we look closer at that use, that may be more in fact how they're operating. But there are a handful now that we know of that are being advertised on Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera, and then likely at least a couple more coming through.
And as you know, there haven't been any issues with them.
No, we, we have not received, our department has not received complaints at all that I know of.
Tom? No, I'm sorry, Patrick, thanks.
Oh, great. Thanks. I think, I agree with you. It doesn't seem like the city is ready to take on this. It would be nice if they had a structure for how this works, and as well as penalties and stuff like that, all in a list. I think, instead of sending it back to the planning commission, though, I think that is more of a legislative.
Well, it's, it's zoning. It's, so that's generally planning commission. Otherwise, it's gonna go, it's, it's gonna need to go to planning commission because it involves zoning, so if it goes to legislative, if you want to go to legislative to make a recommendation to planning and then to council. Just so you know that planning is, would be in the loop, but legislative could be the first step if you wanted that.
Might be quicker.
Okay, I also had a question for you. Sue, chill, sorry. So the state says that we can't deny it. Did they put a, well, without conditions, did they put down a list of conditions that a municipality can impose on Airbnb?
Well, there, there are, admittedly, our tourist rooming house ordinance is pretty broad and does not define owner occupied versus not occupied, how many days maybe the owner has to live there, how long, you know, it's, it's really not super detailed, so. And it, it could be, and that that would then be kind of a built-in condition, built-in conditions, and then could, you know, could potentially give you more flexibility in terms of, you know, if someone, it could be a, technically be a tourist rooming house, but not be approved because they are not, you know, you know, doesn't meet the owner occupancy, you know, the, the limits in terms of what the state has set, so. So the, so it's, you know, so to that extent, they have said what we, what we can and can't do. So I guess those are then limits that then we can use to condition, right, or place in our ordinance. You know, the other way to do it, and which other municipalities have been doing, is just to have, you just register. So it's not a conditional use permit, it's a, it's a registration, which is kind of the same thing. You, you can still have conditions, but it doesn't involve the public hearing, it doesn't probably even involve notice to neighbors. And, but then that, that permit can actually be issued to a person then, not a parcel. So, easily, more, you know, could be more easily, you're not really talking about a zoning, zoning issue and, you know, property rights, it's, it's more of a, it's issued to a person. So there are kind of pros and cons of doing it the different ways, and I, I agree that probably since, I mean, even though they've been around for a while, with the change in the state law, the change in the interpretation of what a conditional use permit is and how that, you know, that you pretty much have to allow those uses, and the only way to control them is through condition, so it's very hard, really hard to deny a conditional use permit. You know, it, and, and as I said, it, this is all kind of coming more, more later, that it's probably a good time to just really look at what, what we want and how we want to address them. Because I don't think there was a very, very much of a conversation at all when this, when we changed, you know, added this in our zoning ordinance a few years ago, I think it was probably just not even talked about. And because of the evolution of the law, the case law, and just the more of these being around, I think, you know, I think it's a good idea, I'll be on the same page on that, because we don't want to do, if our, if our ordinance is very broad, you know, then you're losing some control over doing certain things if it's, you know, but you want to do things that are consistent with the, with the state law. So do you want to be real restrictive and, and take advantage of the things you can't control and, or, you know, me more general, like I said, some, some municipalities, it's just a registration, and as long as you, you know, they're, they're recognizing that they're, they're there, they're permitted in residential areas, and it's just a registration process, so. And, and they don't use conditional use permits, because I think they realize that a conditional use permit really, it's, it's more like a registration process, and, and if they meet certain requirements, you almost have to approve them. It's very difficult to deny, and as Carrie said, you know, and we were trying to think this afternoon, what would be a reason to deny this? And it can't be because these shouldn't be in neighborhoods, or we want a quiet neighborhood, or it really has to be site-specific. And, and for this particular one, there's, you know, it's difficult to come up with a reason of why we could legally, you know, why you could deny it. So, the issue with changing the ordinance, though, after, after the fact, after someone's already applied under a previous, you know, permit or a CUP structure, I guess, you know, we might have to deal with the effects of that. But we may go, just go to a registration process, which then, you know, doesn't, you know, probably would not be, and have any effect on the current applications, but there are, there are a lot of questions and a lot of, you know, I, I think our ordinance can certainly be a little more specific to assist in, in these applications. So. So what was your question? Roll the tape? Go back thirty minutes? No.
With the, thank you very much for that. And with the registration process, then can you revoke the registration of that person?
Right, right. And I don't want to say it's necessarily easier, but it, it's, I've seen where they're actually, you know, they're registered to a, you know, a person gets them. It's not necessarily the, the property, I mean. But, you know, if, so. There are different ways to do it, and, and I think it's just kind of evolving, and, and the ones that are there now, there, there has never been an application because I don't think, you know, we, I don't think anyone's gone out looking for them. I don't think people probably even realize that they need to do something, because this is something fairly new in our code. And I think the ones that are going through Verbo and Airbnb, they actually are paying room taxes because of those entities do collect taxes, and are mandated to collect taxes and remit those to us. The problem is, they send us a check, and they don't tell us where, where the money's coming from, and we've been trying to find out, okay, well, where, where are these locations? And obviously, we can go online and, and look to see who's advertising, but. So, you know, that's another thing to be, make sure that these, these, at least get, they need a room tax permit in addition to the other, other permits, but I think before all of these start coming in and people wanting to be in compliance, just look at maybe, you know, different options in terms of, of this would be, would be appropriate.
Okay, so we have the conditional use permit registration. There may be others. Is there a way to find that out, or is there, like, could you make up a list and send us and say pros and cons on that? Is that something simple?
Uh, you mean a list of?
The different ways that we could regulate or not regulate.
Yeah, we could work on that.
Yeah, so, I mean, likely, it would be community development department staff kind of reviewing the current guidelines, making suggestions at the advisement of council. If there are specific things that you have in mind now, it would be helpful to know, so we could integrate that. If the goal is to be more restrictive, to kind of go, go as restrictive as possible, we could integrate, you know, anything that the state does allow us to do. We could also look at comparing the conditional use permit process to the licensing process. I know the city of Madison has very extensive guidelines. They have licensing process. I know the City of Madison has very extensive guidelines. They have, I think statewide, they have pretty much integrated every requirement they can to be as limiting as possible. So we could, you know, do that in-house. And then likely the way that would work is first, it would go to Plan Commission for review, for their kind of guidance and their advisement and anything they would want us to incorporate. And then next, it would come to you, you know, whether it's a new licensing process or whether it's a code amendment, if we are choosing to do it more so under zoning.
I would like to be as least restrictive as we could be and preserve the property owner's rights. And if there's a way that we could still oversee it with still preserving those rights, that's what I would, I don't want to copy myself after Madison. I would rather be more for individual rights. Thank you.
So you would rather see, for example, the supplemental standards that we have now relaxed a bit?
Okay, so if we, I would like us to decide on how we're going to treat each and every one of these. And not just have it be a, this person gets this and that person gets that, with being as, with still having oversight on them. I like the registration idea, because if they, if we have a problem with them and we can just take their registration away, that solves a problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Tom?
I'm not sure anymore. It becomes another one of these issues that our great leaders in Madison pass one law after another on the books. And for the most part, we're not watching and says what they can do. And obviously, we can't, you know, it's not to discriminate and that type of thing. Those are things to be taken care of and that. But there should be there should be a means that the community has to say yes or no. Put what constraints on it they want to, or where it's going to be. But then again, you get into a discrimination or whatever, it could be. So it's just, a lot of times these laws, I guess to some people, look like yeah, they're great, but they don't get the whole ramifications going through of what could all happen. Until somebody like us is faced with it. And then we have to try to deal and make the rules. But then we got to find out if the rules that we make are even legal. Because we can't do what the state says we can't do. Or we don't know for sure what the state said we could do. So it's another one where not saying intentionally, but somebody wanted something and the whole thing wasn't looked at what could be done. There should be able, should be, should be able to really restrict how this would be run, regulated. Lawn's going to have to be kept up. Parking and all that type of stuff should all be, have to be put in there. So it's, but again, it comes down to us having to make the rules, but then finding out are the rules that we come up with legal to do. And to compare the different communities is one thing, but I'm not totally against, but it's also the communities that you would compare against is what that community is offering, is what they're in the business of doing. In such, in such a way as, not against what Madison may have, but in the sense that they, with the university there and everything else, that it's a totally different game that they have there that they would be working and playing with, or could be. But there may be good points that they have with it too. I don't know. But, so it's just, with one, I think we're on the block with this here quite a bit. And I think Jay's molsten sending it back to that. I think there's a lot of work to be done, I think, but I, and the department, we have suggestions to get to them. And there's another one waiting to be looked at, go through the process, that we're just going to have to, I guess, move along with it, because it's it's hard to react after the fact, after somebody wants something, and then that you can't, you know, how to say, say no. You have, you know, we need the rules there for what can be. We just can't make them up as we go along. So with that, I'll let us go back and there's nobody else to speak. We can take the vote on this. So that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Dean?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. This motion failed at two to two. So is that, is it because it's a tie that it came to us? Or if it was one to three, would we be talking about this now?
Yeah, they just make recommendations and you consider no matter.
I didn't know if that.
Yeah, it doesn't really, I mean, it just comes to you without a recommendation.
It comes either way, I know. Just as long as it's a, as an order.
Yep.
Sherry?
Thank you. Just a couple more clarifications for Carrie. So if we changed the ordinance or changed and went to like a permit process or whatever, what would happen? Or would we decide at that time, the current properties that we already have one for, how those would work?
So, okay, so if they don't have a conditional, okay, so I guess it depends, couple, okay, couple different ideas. So if we went more, I guess either way, the licensing way or the conditional use permit, if properties had not gone through that process, they still would be required to do so. We could still follow up as a department and issue zoning letters and say, you know, this is a requirement, you haven't, you haven't done this, you haven't gone through this process. So they would still need to comply and meet current requirements. And then moving forward, I guess where it wouldn't apply is if properties have gotten conditional use permits under old codes. Because they, like if we have this to go on now and we issued a conditional use permit, they would fall under whatever existed at the time. But if someone is just out of compliance and they haven't gone through the process, then they would be required to come back and do so.
Sorry, lost me. No. And there's, and there's no way to tell, I mean, whether they've been there for 30 days or they're exceeding the 30 days. I mean, if the neighbors complained or something.
Right, right. I mean, if we have verification, I mean, one of the, in another city that I'm involved with, you know, with noise violations, and I mean, this was an example of people walking through their property. I mean, it was somewhere else. But with cellphones now, I mean, it is easier to document some violations, you know, whether it be noise. Stays would be more difficult. But I guess if someone has seen the same car over a period of time and they could, you know, have a date stamped, you know, this person was here, this person was here. I mean, they would still be in violation and it's something that we would still need to follow up on. But there definitely are conditions that would be harder to verify than others. But technically, I mean, they should be abiding by all, you know, all conditions. And hopefully, if they're in violation, it's something that we could follow up on.
And another question, just to verify, as it is now, the conditional use permit goes with the property, does not go with the owner.
Correct.
So a permit would actually go through, like Sue was saying, with the actual person?
Right. I mean, it's just the same as when you're, when you get, see, when they go and get their license through the state, that's actually issued to a person. And that's not transferable, except maybe to a surviving spouse, or, you know, depending if it's a corporation, then there's only certain. So, yeah, it would, it would be more like a license or a permit that's issued to a person versus something, a zoning issue with the property. And I just want to clarify, at present, there is not, there is no parcel in the city that has a conditional use permit for a tourist rooming house.
Correct.
And no one has ever applied for one. And the bed and, there is a bed and breakfast, that's a separate classification. That's not considered a tourist rooming house.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I would be in favor, like we're saying, to bring it back, kind of investigate, is a permit processed better than the conditional use permit? I mean, myself, I don't have complete issues. I've stayed at tons of VRBOs. And I mean, I don't know if any of you have, but it was nice to have the family have a kitchen, you know, and that kind of stuff come and go instead of staying at a hotel. And I mean, we never had to issue with anything. And so I'm not totally against this. You know, we have to think new, new ways of doing things. But yes, I would rather have it where if something is going wrong, that there's a process that we can revoke. So, thank you.
Thank you. I see no other requests. So seeing none, we have a motion to send us back to Planning Commission. Cast your ballots, please. That motion carried seven As with one name. We're on to item number 11. I think, Tom, you had a few questions for Wood County?
Yeah. Yeah, and it I did end up holding it out, but and I guess I'll start with where I started before, is that since we had our last discussion several months ago, last fall or whenever maybe it was, I think that the county was here and went over everything. Has there been significant changes from what you had presented to us, such as in the height of the buildings? Are there skylights in the buildings? You know, that's one thing, I've been told that, that that may have occurred in the plans. And I said, is that since we talked? And they say, yes, they think so. So I'm just wondering, has there been, or what has there been in changes to the plan, to the layout, to everything, since we talked, since we talked with you several months ago, I think was the last we had communication that we had between us? What has, what has changed or has there been in the layout, configuration, parking, height and that of the proposed facility? I know it's, I think because of how long it's been going on, there's a, it's a lot more cost than what there had been into it, or it was going to be anyway. Maybe you've been able to cut some out of that, I don't know. But, so anyway, so that's just, you know, has there been, and I significant changes than what we were presented with as a council? When it was presented to us, whenever that was, last fall or something?
I think Jason or Ruben could probably answer that.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the chance to speak, Mr. Mayor, in response to that question. I'm Jason Greenberg. I'm the Planning and Zoning Director for Wood County. And I've been participating in the jail planning group. And we have part of the jail planning group represented tonight, and Ruben Van Tassel, who's our maintenance director. So what I'll do is I'll take a first shot at it and try to address the question directly. So first off, last fall, when we approached the council, it was in regards to a variety of things. One thing was the vacation of Avon Street. We were also looking at the rezoning of the Avon Street parking lot to institutional zoning. And the third thing was updating the comprehensive plan to be consistent with the rezoning that we were requesting. So really, those three things that were taking place were kind of independent from the actual Justice Center itself or jail building itself. But we did provide some drawings of what the form or size of the jail could look like. Now, we had probably some general idea of what the square footage would be, things like that, general idea of the height. But we really didn't get into the detail of where, you know, what the exterior design would look like, where windows would be, if there'd be skylights and things like that. A lot of the details with the form of that design came into existence, I guess, earlier this year when we started the design process, working with the architects and the jail team. So really, the scope of the project has not changed at all since last fall. But you have seen more, definitely more detail in the layout of that structure on that site. If you all can, you probably have a reference to that property. It's a little bit of a challenging property as far as the shape goes. So a lot of massaging was done with the design to make it fit there. Also being, you know, especially used structure with, where sightlines in the structure are very critical for safety of inmates and staff and things like that. The height of the structure was kind of determined based on things like that. So really, as you go through the design phase, a lot of the details in that structure come out. So what you saw last fall was a real general concept. And what you see in your packet right now is a result of all the design phase that took place with the jail design team earlier this year. One thing to keep in mind too, as we went through design process, we tried to, as best as possible, to meet the underlying zoning requirements of the institutional district as far as setbacks, amount of pervious surface, height of the structure, parking and things like that. And those were all referenced in the application that we submitted. One, you know, looking back, I think one thing that may look significantly different from that, what we showed you in fall, is maybe from, if you're looking at Market, from Market Street to the courthouse building, I believe in those drawings, there might have been a sky, like a skyway connecting the jail to the courts. And the reason that was in place at that time is because we have our power accessing the courthouse on the south side of the building. What we've decided to do is move that power to the north side of the building, so that we can tuck the new addition directly next to the courthouse. So, does that answer the question?
Yeah, and, you know, I'm just looking at the on the sheet I got here is, you know, approved deviations from land development standards. 19-foot building height deviation. you know, approved deviations from land development standards, 19-foot building height deviation, a five-foot deviation from the required building setback, you know, and where it, where something like that may not, may not be a bad thing, but then when you take where this is being built, in a residential area, mostly small houses, residential housing, it's close to the downtown, a riverfront, I guess I'm getting at somewhat is, what view is going to be taken away from residents that live there, possibly? You look at this, it's deviation, you know, and maybe, you know, when I see 19-foot height deviation, well, 19 feet is quite a bit. But I'm not sure, does that mean added to what we were looking at last fall? Is that, I mean, I just don't want to jump into here, in a way, when a lot of these things that we get into, nothing against them, but we leave things up to the department to go over to make changes and whatnot. And that's why I think, the closer you can get to the final changes, that you do before you get to that point. And, but I just, there's just, I'm just wondering how this is all going to look out for setting into that picture, into that neighborhood, into the downtown. And then I, it went, it goes through my mind, is that, I can't even remember, how many bed facility is this? 200 and?
What was the question?
How many bed facility is this?
300?
300, okay. Is this, is this then, are we going to be where we were sending people to other locations? Are we going to be bringing people from other locations here then? Is that, is that the intent, too?
No. Is it okay if I address that? Okay. Yeah, so I think years ago, that was maybe an intent, like 20 years ago. With this current plan right now, the plan is to get all the inmates, the Wood County inmates, back to Wood County. We're currently housing a variety of them under contract, you know, Pecat County as well as Adams County. So there is, we pay for that, there's additional costs as far as transportation, there's potential safety issues with things like that. We can offer the programming for rehabilitation, you know, once they get out of jail. So we see a great benefit having them housed in Wood County. Is there a chance I could respond to the height question or issue? Okay. So, do you want to take that one, or?
I can.
I'll start off. Okay, so I guess regarding the height, that's something that we, like I said earlier, we try to stay within the parameters of the underlying zoning district. With a jail, I think, as you know, safety is a big issue, not only for the inmates who are there, but also for the staff. And then in addition to that, we look at efficiency of manning the jail. One thing that really determines the height of the floors is sightlines. For safety, you want to have staff that can see into the cells and things like that, and to make sure the inmates are safe. You also want to be able to have a sightline, so you don't have to overstaff the facility to keep costs down over time. One thing to consider, too, with the jail height, is it's 19 feet over, I believe, what's allowed in that district, but the current courthouse is also above what's currently allowed in institutional district. Not that that makes it right, but what that does, it really allows the scale of that addition to be in sync with the current courthouse, which is a historic building. And really, the design has been run by the State Historical Society, been approved. One thing that also pushes the jail height up, as far as numbers goes, is, I don't know if you can see me or packets, I don't have reference to the page, but we have what's called a clear story. They're basically boxes on top of the fourth floor, and those are a State Department of Corrections requirement to have natural light enter into the inmate areas. There's, you know, certain state requirements that we're trying to meet with that. Now, when you're looking at the building from Market Street or the street level, a lot of those clear stories will be set back, those nine-foot-tall clear stories will be set back. I guess one question I had, when I was looking at the height of those, why do they have to be nine feet? That was because they have to be above snowlines, things like that. Otherwise, if you have a snow event, they're covered up, you don't allow the natural light in there. So there is some rationale, you know, to why those are included, and some rationale to why we have that building height there. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Did you have more questions, Tom?
Probably, but, and you do have enough parking on property?
Yes, we do. We, would you like me to respond to that, Phil? I could go further on that if you'd like.
On county property, enough?
Yeah, we do have a little bit on the public lot across from Market, but we, I won't go real deep into this for time's sake, but we did actually do three different drone flights of different days at the courthouse. One day that we knew was a peak day as far as court activity, which usually drives a high volume of parking need. Then we did two what we thought were average days. So we pretty much confirmed that the amount of parking that we're proposing is adequate, based on the parking surveys that we've done on three different days. And I believe in the application, we included the numbers on those drone flights of the inventories and the days those were done. And in addition to that, we included the amount of traffic, the amount of customers or individuals entered the building that day.
Thank you. Sherry?
Thank you. Approximately, and I was looking at the diagrams, how many, how many feet taller is it than the existing courthouse, approximately?
I have this here, would you?
I'll address that, Mr. Mayor. The existing courthouse, from our documentation, is approximately 56 feet above grade. And the new facility, right now, is proposed to be roughly 64 feet above grade, within a few inches of that. As was mentioned, the clear story concept to get the required natural light into the building is still being looked at. And so with mention of, you know, future changes, maybe a department could approve that, that would only be if we are reducing the requested deviation. For example, if we get approval to exceed the height requirement by up to 19 feet, as the current design is, if we alter that clear story and use a prefabricated skylight unit, that would be maybe two feet shorter in height overall. So I believe that the approval would authorize staff in-house to authorize, if it's a reduced request, if our plan changes and we're only going to be 17 feet over the height restriction, that would be up to the council. If you want to view that again, we'll bring it back to this group. If it's more in compliance, staff could authorize that. So that's the height difference right now. So we would be looking at, currently, the design of the new jail would be about nine feet taller than the existing courthouse. We may be tightening that up to about a seven-foot difference.
Thank you. I just wanted to make clarification that people weren't thinking that it's 19 feet taller than the current facility, which I know it's not. And I know, keep it short, it's a long meeting as it is, but I know you guys are taking steps, and there's certain things that have to be done according to the Department of Justice, you know, and the criminal system, to make sure that it's the way it's supposed to be. But I know in architectural designs, some that you showed in prior, that you, I mean, you are being aware that there are homes in the area, and you've looked at that in trying to make it flow with the current courthouse and those kinds of things as well, that, you know, I think it'd be helpful for people to remember that, you know, that you're keeping track of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, what are your wishes? We have a motion by Ryan, seconded by Sherry. I'm assuming to adopt it as presented?
As presented, yep.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As with one N. Moving on to item 12, I'm going to have to apologize, I forgot who held that out. Was that Tom? Was that you? Oh, I'm sorry, Patrick?
Okay, I watched most of the meeting, but I didn't get to this part of that meeting. I just wanted to know, I've read through it, and I just want to know what it was about before I voted yes or no on it.
Carrie, can you?
Yep, yep. So what the impetus for this item was, is we have a lot of flexibility and allowance for different types of housing styles within our zoning ordinance, but for all the different twin homes, townhomes, multifamily, we require a 400-square-foot garage per dwelling unit. And we found that, there were a couple barriers that it was creating. One was related to affordability, and the builder costs that are being passed down by requiring that. And then the second thing was the aesthetic aspect. If you have a duplex and there's two 400-square-foot garages in the front, it's a lot in appearance of garages with a small house attached behind. And so we felt that for smaller units, a 200-square-foot garage was sufficient, and recommended that change to Chapter 11 zoning.
Okay, normally, it's like in red. So this isn't all new? This is already existing?
This is existing language, except for the red words or the proposed modifications.
I don't have any red on here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the Planning Commission report. I'm not sure what, let me find this back here.
We're looking at the ordinance that's in our packet, right?
Yeah, it is. Well, the ordinance in the packet is probably black and white.
Oh, okay.
So the changes are from 400 to 200?
Okay, thank you.
Answer your question. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Sherry, seconded by Dean. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Ns. That ends the Planning Commission report. We'll move on to Consider Adoption and Action of Standing Committees of the Common Council, starting with a very long report, Finance and Property Committee.
Thank you. The Finance and Property Committee meeting met at 5:03 PM on Tuesday, June 7, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall. Meeting was live on Wisconsin Rapids Community Media, WRCM Spectrum Channel 985 and Solaris Channel 3, online at www wr-cm.org, or via WRCM's Roku app, and was streamed live on the City of Wisconsin Rapids Facebook page. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present. Also in attendance were older persons, Pollock, Mayor Blazer, Paul Volart, Tyler Mickelson, Jennifer Gosick, and Tim DeSorcy, a list of others. An attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Item one, call to order. Chairperson Zachary called the meeting to order at 5:03 PM. Item two, review and approve estimate to purchase a Pavey Jet MG7 Skidsteer Asphalt Paver Attachment. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman, to approve the purchase, and the motion carried to approve the purchase of the paver attachment, not, price not to exceed $25,000. Motion carried three to zero. Item three, discuss and take action on a procedure on fleet purchases. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachary, to approve the purchase of up to four pickup trucks as specified, and up to two multi-axle trucks as specified, at a cost to be determined at the time of purchase. Motion carried three to zero. Item four, consider for approval a tax cab license renewal application from Randy Wayos for Gotta Go Taxi LLC. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke, to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item number five, consider a resolution to reimburse Wood County for the actual cost of purchasing two ESNS Express votes at an estimated cost per unit as spelled out on the attached intergovernmental agreement. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Zachary, to approve a resolution to reimburse the county, and the motion was carried three to zero. Item number six, consider for approval, consider approval of the 2022/2023 Class A liquor, Class A beer, Class B liquor, Class B beer, and Class C wine alcohol licenses. Consider sending notices of nonrenewal or denial for those licenses who are not qualified to hold a license because of delinquencies or other disqualifications and other reasons for nonrenewal. It was moved by Zachary, seconded by Veneman, to approve the 2022/2023 Class A liquor, Class A beer, Class A liquor, Class B liquor, Class B beer, Class C wine and alcohol licenses, and sent notices of nonrenewal or denial for those licenses who are not qualified to hold a license because of delinquencies or other disqualifications and other reasons for nonrenewal. Motion carried three to zero. Item number seven, consider for approval a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license and temporary retail Class B wine license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, Inc., at 2651 8th Street South for a live music on the patio event to be held Friday, July 8, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachary, to approve, and the motion carried three to zero. Item number eight, consider for approval a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, Inc., address 2651 A Street South for a garden art exhibit event to be held Thursday, July 14, 2022, from 5:30 to 7:30. It was moved by Zachary, seconded by Bemke, to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item number nine, consider for approval a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverage license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, Inc., address 2651 A Street South for an open-mic event to be held on Friday, July 29, 2022, from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman, to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item number 10, consider for approval a special events application, street closure request, and temporary retail Class B fermented malted malt beverages license application for the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, Inc., at 1120 Lincoln Street for an outdoor, off-the-clock event to be held Wednesday, July 13, 2022, from 4:00 PM until 6:00 PM at Shopmaster located at 850 Rosecrans Street. It was moved by Zachary, seconded by Bemke, to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item 11, consider a request from Johnny's LLC, doing business as Johnny's Bar, Josh Vetrone Agent, to temporarily extend the alcohol license premises located at 2610 A Street South to include an outdoor area as shown on the attached map on Friday, July 22, and Saturday, July 23, 2022, from 6:00 PM until 2:00 AM, and for a noise variance for an indoor DJ until 1:00 AM on both nights. Moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman, to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item number 12, consider for approval the appointment of Daryl Jackie Vlasquez as accessory agent for retail Class B fermented malted beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license- licenses for Headquarters Bar of Wisconsin Rapids, Inc., doing business as Headquarters Bar for the premises located at 140 Second Street North. This item was this item was considered with items 13 and 14. I read all these together. Just read them all up. Item 13, consider for approval the appointment of Rhonda Ann Erlab as successor agent for the retail Class A fermented malted beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor license for GPM Southeast LLC doing business as Bread and Butter Shop, number 4532, for premises located at 2130 A Street South. This item was considered with items 12 and 14. Item number 14, consider for approval the appointment of Rhonda Ann Erlab as successor agent for retail Class A fermented malted beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor license for GPM Southeast LLC doing business as Bread and Butter Shop, number 4533, for premises located at 1740 17th Street South. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Zachary, to approve items 12, 13, and 14 as presented. Motion carried three to zero. Item 15, consider closing the following streets and suspending the open container ordinance for these streets and adjoining sidewalks for the city's 2022 Fourth of July event from 3:00 PM to 11:59 PM on Monday, July 4, 2022, or the July 4 fireworks rain date. Second Street from East Jackson Street to Mead Street, Mead, Locust, Witter, Pine, Walnut, Maple, and Bird Streets from Second Street South, Third Street South, Oak Street from Second Street North to Third Street North, First Street North from East Jackson Street to Second Street North, Grand Avenue from Third Streets to Third Avenue, First Avenue South from West Grand Avenue to Chase Street, Johnson and Goggins Streets from First Avenue South to Third Avenue South, Second Avenue South from West Grand Avenue to Johnson Street. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachary, to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item 16, consider a recommendation from statewide services to deny claim from Waste Management for alleged damages to their building by a city-owned truck on 9/8/2021. It was moved by Zachary, seconded by Veneman, to approve this recommendation. Motion carried three to zero. Item 17, 2023 budget discussion. Finance Director DeSorci presented an update on the 2023 budget projection. No action was taken. Item number 18, audit of bills. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachary, to approve check numbers 12768 to 13148. Motion carried three to zero. Item 19, set next meeting date. Next regular committee meeting will be on Tuesday, July 5, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Item 20, adjourn. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Zachary to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero. Meeting adjourned at 6:20 PM. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
You're making that motion?
I'm entertaining one.
Does somebody want to hold out anything before a motion's made? I guess.
I don't necessarily want to hold anything out, but I just wanted to comment on 15, so I don't know when you want me to do that.
Well, we've got a motion by Dean. And a second by Jay. Tom, you're first in the speaking order.
Okay. Get back to the items 12, 13, and 14, but basically on 12, without getting into the maybe specific names, at least in this here, but as I looked through this here, and that's where I became confused. There's a as I see it, there's a couple charges that were against this person, weren't there? I don't know how recent they were. Now, unless I'm not seeing this right, that's why I'm not saying who or what. I mean, I could, I can show you, take it out of here and yeah. And I'm just wondering how long it's those cases have been and whatnot, because we just we've approved it, and I just saw that this was on here, that there's a battery and a domestic charge on this one.
Is that normally something that, when you review these, that you would be cause for denial for allowing a license? Oh, that's what you meant. There you go.
Basically, it's like a five-year grace period, so if it's within the last five years, then we can, I can deny it. But usually, if it's approved, it has not been within the last five years.
Been over five?
Correct.
Okay. That's the question I had, how long it's been, so that's it.
Sounds good, thank you. Sheri.
Thank you. Festivities were awesome this last weekend. Hopefully, everyone got out. But I just had a couple questions on number 15. Were there any issues the day that the, obviously, because the bridge is closed, and then we shut down the other bridge to do the festivities? So by 7:30 AM Saturday morning, I had five people calling that were very disgruntled because the only bridge across town was the Expressway Bridge. Were there any incidents, police-wise, where there was any accidents or anything like that, that would have impaired, since we have one bridge to get across town, open for the entire city? Were there any issues that day? I just, like I said, the constituents were just very angry, so I just said I would mention that, because I know the Fourth of July is coming up as well. But that's all I have.
I didn't realize that.
The parade and the Blossom Festival. And I know myself, I had an issue getting to City Hall that morning.
Then we'll have the same thing on Fourth of July.
It'll be, it'll just be a longer, and I'm sure we've thought about it. I mean, it's just odd, just bad timing, you know, that maybe we shouldn't have started the bridge construction until after the festivities, just because we have one bridge. But in the case that something would happen, I mean, obviously, it's just the Fourth of July, we could always move the people off if, I mean, if there was some if there was an accident on the Expressway Bridge or whatever, that then there's no access across town, we would those kind of incidents have been thought of, I'm assuming? Thank you.
Yeah, I think we'd also discussed during the meeting about ambulance, too. You know, if there was a need for an ambulance to get across that Grand Avenue could be used for that. Did you want to say something, Paul, or?
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate that, that we spoke about that when we talked about the street closures, we talked about possibly even delaying that to later in the afternoon compared to 7 o'clock in the morning, but we thought it was in our best interest to have that shut down with a vendor showing up. There is, just looking at the construction schedule, the bridge isn't necessarily being worked on, it's the west side of Jackson Street, so that is in gravel. So if worst-case scenario, we had to get across with emergency personnel, there's a ramp on the west end, so we could get across the Jackson Street Bridge if need be.
I was just thinking, because this is going to be a lot longer timeframe on the Fourth of July, we're talking noon till whenever. I mean, so it's a whole day, not just a few hours. So like I said, I just wanted to present that because my constituents were angry for a few hours, and this is going to be all day, which I did remind them, so I just, thank you. I know there's nothing we can do, but
On Saturday, the Cranberry Blossom Festival, the west side was shut down from 7 to, I believe it was 5 o'clock in the afternoon, so, I mean, but point taken.
It's already our intention.
Matt?
I don't necessarily know if I want to hold anything out, but if we wanted to talk about the budget, that would be the time. Item 17, it's on there. We wanted to start talking about it earlier, but I don't know.
I think there's also a committee, a whole meeting coming up.
We'll be talking about it, don't? I'm just excited.
I don't know if our finance director is as excited. Okay, sounds good. So we do have a motion and a second on the Finance and Property Report. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. To move on to the Public Works Reports. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, June 2, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall and via remote video conference. Ryan Austin, Dennis Pollock were in attendance. Others attending are listed below. Item number one, call the meeting to order. The meeting was called to order at 5:13 PM. Item two, review engineering and street department monthly activity report. Reports were reviewed. Item three, review the recycling cooperative agreement between the City of Wisconsin Rapids and neighboring communities in regards to the operations of the city compost sites. Recycling Cooperative Agreement was reviewed. Item four, review the 2021 sidewalk maintenance summary, the Safe Step 2021 sidewalk maintenance summary, and 2022 sidewalk repair proposals. Reports were reviewed. Item five, review referral list. No items were updated. Item six, set the next meeting date. The next meeting date was set for Tuesday, June 21, at 4:30. And then item seven was adjournment. With that, I will submit the report of the Public Works Committee for approval.
We have a motion by Matt. Seconded by Jay. Is there any further discussion in that report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. You broke it? All right. We're thinking. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Next report, sir?
Okay, the Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, June 21, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall and via remote video conference. Ryan Austin, Sheri Evanson, and Dennis Pollock were in attendance. Others attending are listed below. Item one, call the meeting to order. The meeting was called to order at 4:45 PM. Item two, review the bid results for the West Riverview Expressway Traffic Signal Improvement Project and consider awarding the contract to the low-qualified bidder. There were no bids received at the bid opening on June 17, 2022, at 9:00 AM. Considerations will be given to rebidding in the future. Item three, review and approve the conditions for a street privilege permit for Mead Witter Foundation Incorporated. Motion by Pollock, seconded by Austin, to amend the conditions as follows. To remove the payment of potential future liabilities due to the installation valued at $13,055, and to remove the requirement of the Mead Witter Foundation to file with Digger's Hotline and to mark the private utility. Motion carried three, zero. Item four, review the referral list. Referral list was reviewed with other person Evanson referring review and consider parking on the north side of Baker Street between Fifth Street North and Eighth Street North. Item five was set the next meeting date. Next meeting date was set for Thursday, July 14, 2022, at 4:00 PM, which has now changed to 5:00 PM. And item six is adjournment. Motion by Austin, seconded by Evanson, to adjourn at 5:17 PM. Motion carried three, zero. With that, I submit the report of the Public Works Committee on June 21 for approval.
So do we have a motion? Motion by Dean, seconded by Matt. Any further? Tom?
I'd just like to hold on number three, just for separate hold.
Sounds good. Is there any further discussion on the balance of that report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. If it will let you. That motion, or, yeah, motion carried eight A's, zero N's regarding item three.
I'm just going to vote against it, that's all, so.
Yeah. We entertain a motion. That motion by Ryan, seconded by Jay, to approve the item as presented. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's to one N. Item D, Human Resource Committee meeting held on June 14. Jay?
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met Tuesday, June 14, at 1:30 PM. All committee members were present. There's a list on file of others in attendance in the clerk's office. Item number one, Chairperson Bemke called the meeting to order at 1:32 PM. Item number two, HR updates. A, seasonal personnel update. B, leadership training with best workforce solutions were completed made of 2022. C, CSS police chief update. D, the current recruiting. And E, the wage study. Updates provided, and no action was taken. Three, the committee may go, vote to go into closed session under Section 19851E Wisconsin Stats, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee may discuss the proposal for successor collective bargaining agreement between the City of Wisconsin Rapids and the Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association. There was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Reom, to move into closed session pursuant of the above statute. Roll call vote taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three, zero. In closed session, motion by Bemke, seconded by Delaney, to recommend approval of an offer for successor collective bargaining agreement, provided the agreement is ratified by WRPPA no later than July 19, 2022. The committee may adjourn in closed session or may go into open session. The committee did not return to open session. Item number five, the committee does not go into closed session or does not adjourn in closed session, the committee may, in open session, consider ratification of a successor labor agreement between the City of Wisconsin Rapids and the Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association. The committee did not return into open session. Item six was adjournment. Motion by Reom, seconded by Delaney, to adjourn in closed session. Motion carried three, zero. The meeting adjourned at 2:00 PM. With that, I would like to submit this for approval, holding out items three, four, and five.
Thank you. Sheri?
Thank you. I would just like a little bit more clarification on two, if we could hold that out as well.
Sounds good. So a motion is, or a second to approve the roll call and the adjournment. All right, so on the balance, yeah, does anyone have any questions? So on the balance of the report, whenever the clerk's ready, we'll we can vote on the balance. Patrick? There you go. All right, glad to see that motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We'll start with the, we can take them in order, item number two. Sheri.
Thank you. Ryan, I don't know if he's here, Jay. Okay, so Jay, I did watch the meeting, but I kind of went through it, and I forgot my notes. The leadership training has been completed, I know he said that. And he said, how many employees actually participated or department heads, right? Do you remember what the number was on that?
Thirty-two sticks in my head, don't hold me to it.
Thirty-two sticks in my head, don't hold me to it, but it wasn't just department heads, it was.
Leads as well, like lead workers too?
Not that far down.
Not that far down.
Leads, assistants.
There's some water light employees.
Yeah.
I was thinking 12 or 13, he said, so that's why I just.
I think it was in the 30s, wouldn't it change?
Easily, yeah.
Okay. And then the wage study, I know, obviously, with all the different changes that we've been having, with positions changing and modifying them and that, but we've been in it almost over a year now, is that coming close to finalization, or what?
So we met with Patrick from Carlson Detman, was it a week ago or so? He was supposed to rerun some numbers for us, and I believe we have a meeting scheduled for the 7th of July with him. And in July, hopefully, the plan is to present this to council, so.
Thank you, that's all I needed.
And I guess, well, regarding this item, what are your wishes? Yeah, there's no action to take it, we still need to. It's good to go, then. We'll just go on, how's that? We can motion a second too, as long as you got the motion up easily. There you go. We're good. Jay, three, four, five.
Sue, do you want to, you want to address three, four, and five?
Yeah. Right, HR committee, when they met last week, we were considering a proposal from the police group after they had not ratified our previous tentative agreement. We came up with a counterproposal, which was pretty similar to their proposal, but with some more few changes to it. Then the HR committee said, basically said they would approve that, provided that it was timely ratified, because we've kind of been going back and forth with them, where we agree to something, and they'd agree to something, and they take it to their membership, and it would not get ratified, so I'm happy to report that last night, they ratified what the HR committee had recommended at their meeting last week, and that was sent to all of you earlier today, I have hard copies here if anyone wants to see it again, but I would recommend approval of the of the agreement with WRPPA. It'll be a three-year contract beginning January 1 of this year.
Any questions? We have a motion by Sherry. And second by Matt. No further discussion, please cast your ballots. You're fine. It's tired. They could downgrade it. Thank you. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. Moving on to item nine, which is reports of other committees, commission, boards, and department reports. What are your wishes? Yep. The computer and the clerk catch up? More so the computer. We have a motion by Dean. Is there a second? And we have a second. Sherry?
Thank you. Just a quick question, I was just surprised that I didn't see the Park and Rec Commission report in here. I mean, I know they met the 13th, but I because I thought there's an ordinance supposed to be coming as well, but okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't losing something.
And that ordinance, I believe, should be coming through Legislative and not Park and Rec. Who's the chair of Park? Of Legislative? Probably you.
I nominate Jay.
All right, any other further questions or comments? All right, seeing none, please cast your ballots. And that motion carried seven A's with one abstention. Getting a little punchy now. Item 10 is referral to committees, the clerk has not received any referrals at this point. Sherry?
Thank you. I just, I know when we made the referral tonight to send the referral back to the Planning Commission as far as the rooming house, what are we referring back to it? I mean, is that something as a council that we can give direction for that committee to look at? I mean, are we looking at perhaps going to a permit process? What's the permit process versus the the conditional use report? What are the, just, I would rather have it all put together as, you know, so we don't have to keep dragging this out every month, you know, like, oh, no, I don't want that, let's take it back, and then I'd rather have something more formalized, I think, so that way, the next time it's presented. So I didn't know what our wishes were as a council, of what direction, I mean, I don't want a big conversation on it, but I just wanted to know what is the referral, what are we referring it?
That's a good question, because I'm sure, knowing Carrie, she probably took really good notes, but, yeah, is the council referring it back to do, it looked like Sue wanted to say something.
Well, I think, I guess that's what I was thinking, that maybe it really, the referral was, it'll eventually go to planning, but maybe to go to Legislative first, to figure out really what you want to do and give, and then when it gets to the planning, then they're going to you know, probably take what you have and decide whether they want to go with that or not, but that's what I was thinking, that would be the council's way to have some say in it, but I I agree that they're, you know, I think, what I thought would probably happen is Carrie's department would work on on putting together maybe different options for consideration, and I don't know if you wanted the Planning Commission to really consider those, or you wanted to give them more direction, you wanted to consider those, and then have it go to planning, you know, with kind of more direction, so I agree, I guess it's not clear, other than we come up with all these options, and then someone decides which one you want to go with.
Carrie?
So, okay, so this would be for the actual, how we're handling the tourist rooming house process, correct? How we're wanting to, we'd be giving different options for that. So specifically, in terms of the conditional use permit that was before you tonight, is that all, is that item being referred back to Plan Commission also? So that's going back, and then legislatively, we're also looking at how to handle tourist rooming houses?
Right, but I probably, yeah, that's true, that was really the one thing that was referred back to Planning with the additional, probably that that's kind of on hold until we figure out the framework of going forward, I'm assuming, right? So, yeah, that's correct, that was really the, the referral from Planning was to send that item back, but then also, I think there's referral to Legislative to figure out options on moving forward.
Okay.
And that it would eventually go to Planning also.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
You good with that, Sherry?
Yeah, I just, like I said, I just, I don't want this to drag out and drag out every month, I'd rather have some, you know, have it formulated, so that way we could have a direction, so that way we can vote on it. I mean, maybe not next month, but because there's other ones coming, and so, you know, if they have a right to do it, they have a right to do it, not for us just to keep sitting on our hands and trying to figure out what to do. And then my other referral is just what Sue was talking about, the Legislature has not met, I know I mentioned it last month, of some ideas that perhaps, for transparency, maybe having more department head reports and stuff like engineering does, streets does, just so we have a general knowledge of that, and I know that was going to be referred to, I think, the Legislative. And I know Matt had said that he thought that would be a good idea as well, but I have seen that they haven't met in forever, so I was just wondering if they're, if they're going to meet soon, so that's all I had, thank you.
Yep. Patrick?
Okay, so about eight months ago, I had made a referral to during emergencies, to have a list of people that could be checked on, where they could sign up for a private list that's only held by the police officers and the firemen, so that if we do have power outages and whatnot, that they could be checked on, and I was told it was going to be taken care of, but then later heard that implementation would be a problem with that, and I was just wondering if there was a way that we here all could sit down and talk about how to implement that. I do have a passion for helping people, and when you can see a problem that's going to happen, and you can avoid it, I think it would be good. And speaking with Chief Ekis, he said that a lot of elderly people, they're on oxygen, and their parle go out, but they don't want to bother anybody. And then by the time they do get help, it's way worse than what it would have been if they just would have gotten help right away. So I think this would be a good thing for the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids, and I'm willing to do whatever we need to do to get it done.
Thank you. I think probably a follow-up conversation I can have with Todd and, and Mike.
I think it's a good idea, the only problem I see is, you know, if there's a list.
The volume.
You know, the volume, and then who's going to maintain it, so, you know, if we have a storm and the power's out, now you guys have 300 people to go run around to, and, you know, oh, they passed away, they're not even here, who's that? You know, I mean, it's just, it would be hard to manage that, I didn't, I didn't know if, like, the Division of Aging has anything in place for something like that as well, another resource. It's a great idea, just, like you said, how is it going to be managed, that's, you know, and then if we have people calling all the time, you know, oh, do they check on so-and-so, and, you know, when the phones are busy in an emergency-type thing, I don't know.
I agree, but I mean, we could also help with volunteers or whatever, to help with that, as long as it stays as a private list, so that people's information stays private. But I think it's doable, I really do think that it would be doable, there are hurdles, but I think that we could, could talk it out.
Sounds good. Moving on to item 11, adjournment. What are we voting on? So a motion by Sherry. Second by Dean to adjourn, I guess, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays, everyone have a good night, thank you very much.